Board of Selectmen meeting to order. Two selectmen are present tonight, Mike McInnes is absent. The town administrator is present. And Leo is recording for the general public. Leo Martell and Lyndon Dickerson is gonna upload those to the town website and YouTube. Bob, I have some old business here.
Yeah, I'll approve the seven PM regular minutes in December third year. And I don't know if you, did you make any amendments?
I did make one quick amendment to the effective date of part-time police officer for Dan Scoop from December to January.
Okay, so as amended.
Okay, I'll second your motion, Bob. Motion made and seconded, uh, approved.
There's no discussion?
No discussion.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, I'll give those, actually we gotta sign them, sorry. Okay, I'm gonna open up for public comment.
No, I want Jeff to be able to go home and rest for tomorrow.
All right. Seeing the other two members are on the agenda, we'll skip the rest of that. Okay. Jeff, you're on the, you're on the cross here first.
My turn in the barrel, huh?
The reason we're asking you in to
Did you like me?
Discuss encumbered funds from the highway department is our auditing accountants have asked us to
Yep.
Have encumbered funds come in front of the board of selectmen so that they can either be approved or disapproved so that the selectmen are aware of how that's gonna be
Yep.
Worked on.
Yep.
So the floor is yours for right now, Jeff.
I think the amount was ninety-nine thousand? Yeah, basically my will just call it an even number.
Yeah.
But it's nine, Lee had it like ninety-nine, nine seventy or something like that. I'm just gonna move a little bit short.
So Jeff, we, we're working on a bond?
Yeah, that, that's, it's a good subject to bring up because some things I think hinge on each other.
Thank you. Ninety-nine, nine, seven, seven, five, zero.
Yep.
So with the bond on there, I wanted to talk about that a little bit only because we've got a hundred thousand dollars left over from this year's budget.
Yes.
And if we get the bond, how we're gonna handle that? And or is there a better spot to use that money this year?
I think that if the bond were to be moved ahead and be accepted by those voters that but having that amount of money in the surplus budget might be able to make the first payment. But if the bond got turned down, I'd really like that hundred thousand to go to paving. If all I'm getting at, we're, we're, we got a couple of different angles.
We do when it could get changed again on the floor.
Yes.
As we know, which makes a lot of work for all of us, but
That's why I was thinking if we could come up with a plan that was favorable. I mean, if we did, if the bond fails,
Then we got back
That hundred thousand dollars would be key, but if the bond passes, it's kind of a mute point because we got one point three million to work on.
How about if we did this, if we do the bond first?
Yep.
If that passes, we'll have this as a warrant article and we won't need it, we can just kill it on the floor and it'll go into
General fund.
General funds.
Yeah, that makes sense.
And if not, we'll bring this warrant forward.
I think that's a good way to approach it.
So actually what I had proposed and we touched, talked about it briefly with Jeff was that the bond has to come first before the operating budget and the town attorney clarified that. The budget, operating budget's not been done yet, but we're focusing on the warrant article, so two things came up. If our first bond payment, we all have the schedule for a ten-year plan, our first payment is due February of twenty-twenty-three for thirty-two thousand five, and then we have an additional payment due August fifteenth for one thirty-nine, seven, fifty. So there's actually a little bit more than I was looking at, but I'm looking at this a little closer. So going with this rate, we'd have two payments in twenty-twenty-three and what Jeff was hoping that do two things, the bond, the bond passes, we take the money from his operating budget that we're encumbering, but instead use it to fund a capital reserve deposit. So the money gets put into the deposit and then in twenty-twenty-three, we withdraw the money plus a little bit so that we can make that first payment. And then in the event the bond doesn't pass, you have to decide whether you wanna continue with the, creating the capital reserve, which might be a good thing going forward, and because the school has a capital reserve for all the big projects, and then do a third article to raise and appropriate a hundred thousand for the road.
Well, for one, to take it a little slower. If the bond doesn't pass, there's no need to have a capital reserve set up to make a payment on it, so I wouldn't wanna do that.
Okay, so you need to include that in your warrants, but you can announce during the meeting that this, we're not gonna vote on this, we're gonna pass on it because the bond did not pass.
Right, but if the bond doesn't pass, then what I'd like to do is have a warrant article below that, that we wouldn't read if the bond passed, but if the bond passes, doesn't pass, then that ninety-nine, nine or just about a hundred thousand dollars will go to Jeff like normally for paving.
Yep.
So it wouldn't be raised from taxation on that year, it would come out of your
Yes.
Budget, so.
But it's kinda odd, I mean, I know how the system works, but we're approving this for twenty-twenty-two, but the payments until twenty-twenty-three, so It actually, it's a, it's a false sense of security and I think by maybe going this route, we're kinda preparing ourselves for a little bit and what my goal was originally, or my thought process, I should say, you know, that end goal, was that we've been appropriating a hundred thousand dollars the last several years and putting it into the highway fund for paving. We would stop appropriating that hundred thousand dollars of that for a warrant article. And that would basically go from that type of warrant article to a bond payment. So we would, we would really effectively, simple math, we would keep it somewhat even, you know, we wouldn't
But get all the work in the first two years.
Yeah, we get all the work done, so my, way I was looking at it justifying it, at the end of the day, we really wouldn't be spending any more money.
Right.
They'll be level. I don't know exactly what the payments were, Lee has shown me the paperwork and there's a couple of factors, number of years and the rate at the time and all that, so
And I was trying to
We're kinda estimating
I was trying to do it ten years, cause by ten years up, you know, we're doing some other road project.
Yeah, no, I think, I think it's a good, a solid plan myself in the way to fund it and pay for it, I think that's a good way. I, I mean, I've talked to a few people about it and I'm getting positive feedback.
And just so people understand, just like any payment, most of your interest comes out of the first bunch of payments and then you start paying your principal down.
Yep.
So if some reason you paid this off early, you
Yeah.
You're paying off the interest portion early, you're not paying off the principal portion.
Yes.
In, in a New Hampshire bond bank, you can't pay early.
Right.
I checked into that.
But a private bank, you said, we could.
I looked into that and the banks that, well, citizens who we hold our money in, said that they stopped doing this, so I can continue to look through other banks, but I, I don't know how.
I'm thinking at the end of the day, I think the bond bank, you know, probably does a little
The best rates.
It will be the best total package, but you're right, you, you don't have any
Yeah.
Typically, I don't think towns usually pay it off early, you know, they, they budgeted.
The reason it's a bond is because they know
Yeah.
It's going out over this period of time, they know what they're collecting over that period of time.
It's very unusual for a town to get a whizball amount of money that they could pay toward that, that all comes from taxes.
Yeah, so even under this ten-year plan, the first year is thirty-two, five, the second year is eight thousand, seven, seventy-five, so that's how quick the interest, you're gonna have a scheduled payment, but you have interest that drops down below ten, and then at year five, you're down to five thousand, eight hundred, it just drops.
Yeah, no, I, I think overall it's a good plan, but you're right, the first couple, three years will be stiff on interest.
I, I know the school had attempted to try to pay and found out they couldn't.
Yeah.
Correct, yeah.
Yeah, and like I said, I just, I don't see how the, why the town would
So are you okay, Jeff, instead of encumbering the money, we'll do it through a warrant article setup?
Yeah, I, I'm fine with that, you guys think that's a better way, and I don't wanna make it too confusing for the meeting either.
I, I don't wanna make it any more confusing than it is, but we have to do it this way in order to get the money in the right spots.
Well, yeah, and, and actually what other term could I use? It almost seems greedy that you're asking for one point, one, three million dollars and you're encumbering a hundred thousand here, next thing you know, it's like, well, gee, why do we need to encumber a hundred thousand if you're getting one point three? I think this makes logical sense. And then it still gives us an option. If the bond was to fail, we got a backup plan to help keep funding the highway department the way we are.
Yeah, so that money must still be available.
I'm fine with it, I think it's a reasonable.
All right, that was my thoughts when I was thinking through it, so I just wanted to
Yeah.
Kinda walk through it with you and see and
No, I think it make, it all makes sense.
We'll take a stab at the warrant articles and try and get those lined up.
Okay, so I'll back out the encumbered funds, knowing that we'll have that surplus that will gonna offset one of the other articles for the first payment, for the initial payment.
So either the initial payment and/or put it back into the highway department as
As the regular annual audit.
So it'll be a warrant article funded by excess revenues.
Correct, yeah, surplus, yep.
Surplus.
Okay.
Can, can we talk about the warrant article just a little bit? I, I read the
I haven't gotten into that section of them yet, but I, this is the first time I've seen them, so
Oh, we can talk about it all the time.
No, no, I, this is on my agenda, I plan on reading through them and
We're going to it, uh, review pros to, next thing on the list, so. You're on number two, Jeff, right?
Oh, I don't want that.
I'll read it to you.
To see if Yeah, I've got it on the right page. I, I just, there's a couple, one thing I'd like to change or wording, I think what this primarily is, is paving, so I take that out or a P or somewhere in there.
Okay, the word paving, because this wording came from our, and I told our attorney, it's for road improvements.
You have a base, it's really for paving.
Well, no, I think, uh, Lee may be correct there because if you use some of the money for shoulder work or whatever else
But I mean to add the word paving, it doesn't say paving anywhere in this.
Oh, add, sure. Design permitting construction, replacement, paving and installation of
Yeah, cause you're right, the shoulder work, and it might be a limited amount of work, but I was just, it says construction and I know we were under the impression that would be paving, but it does not say paving.
Will we add it right after the word construction?
And does gross budget have to be in there, Lee, I know she put it in there.
I didn't, the attorney did, this is the language that they recommend. And it does have to say gross. I think it should be right after that word of. And installation of pavement and an estimated length of town making. Best spot is to put that.
Instead of permitting, I figured it ought to be replaced permitting. Design, paving, construction, replacement and installation of estimated number of town roads. Permitting is not a part of our process.
I, I agree with you.
Or, or right after permitting, put it right there, permitting, paving, construction, replacement and installation.
Okay.
I mean, I
Put it right after permitting and I'll just
I mean, I, the attorney crafted, there's probably some theory behind why he did that, but I agree with you, I don't see where permitting's gonna be playing into it, but it's in there, it would be, it would cover it, you know, just in case.
Yeah, I guess you have to get a wetlands crossing.
Or, or something that would come up on you, I don't expect it. I'm not planning on, this is basically him whole laying existing roads that related to, that show, applying shoulders and stuff. I don't see a horrible leaving in there. But I just want people to understand this is right where we're at.
We'll get a question.
Wouldn't that go after installation instead of replacement and, replacement, installation and paving of the roads? Cause you're, you know, you're installing the road, but then you're paving it.
That's the final piece of the whole stuff.
Yeah.
Yeah, any lines that appears at some point that makes sense, it's fine with me, I was just a little nervous, only didn't see it at the moment. Cause that's kind of the hole.
I think instead of pavement, he put installation.
Yeah, that's why I say so, it has installation and then just put, and paving after it, just so that way people understand, people might not understand that installation is paving.
And like Lee said, it could go right after the uninstallation of paving. Pavement.
Yeah, I, I
Yeah.
Whatever you, you feel makes the most sense of
Though we'll check with them in case there's wording that we shouldn't have in there, but we'll do that, we're gonna another review with them for anyway.
Yep, okay.
And, and one other thing, on, on a note, I have got some information back on the price of asphalt. What seems to be, and this is from the asphalt producing company, what seems to be the driving factor this year and any kind of praise, price increases is gonna be the cost of propane or natural gas. Because the big heaters that they produce the asphalt with are not natural gas fired. Due to the cost of natural gas, for whatever reason, that has seemed to increase, so that's where they think they're gonna have an increase. And they were throwing a number out there of approximately, could be as far as much as seventy five dollars a ton or something, I think I had, for argument's sake, I'd use a number of seventy-two.
Seventy-two, yeah.
So I mean, that's, they're not seeing any huge increase other than that, is the actual oils and stuff, they, their estimation is they feel those are stable unless something unforeseen happens, but the natural gas is a little up in here, so they're right now, they, they've told everybody to expect there will be an increase based on that.
I would think that if they start all of these roads that they're talking about doing it, uh, sooner maybe they'll run up to some shortages.
Well, yeah, I don't know, but it's just, we'll see how that plays out, but it's the production of it. So that's gonna be, that seems to be the factor. The only, you know, kinda gray area we don't know about.
Right.
I guess just, they, a lot of this stuff, I believe, the way it was explained to me, they buy it ahead. You know, it's not bought, it ain't needed, it's kinda, they lock prices in a year out and then try to keep it as stable as possible unless, again, something unforeseen happens. But that's the, that's the story I'm getting at, we're not expecting it to go up to eighty-five or ninety dollars a ton or get a big surprise like that.
Well, that's right.
Yeah, so whatever that's worth.
It could go up after the two years.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right, thanks Jeff, I think that's a good plan, we'll start with that. Yep.
Can I just read the other two articles from the board?
Oh, sure.
So we'll skip article, um, two, uh, three, which is the operating budget and go to article four. And this would be the one that I was recommending, the board makes the final decision, but it's to see if the town will vote to establish Dunbarton Capital Reserve Fund pursuant to RSA thirty-five-one for the purpose of capital improvements to the town of Dunbarton and to raise and appropriate the sum of I was hope, there were, there are funds there in, in the operating budget, so I put that number in there, which can be changed. To be placed in this fund, further to name the selectmen's agents to expend from this said fund. This sum to come from unassigned fund surplus, no amount to be raised from taxation in twenty-twenty-two. And that would be what we just removed from encumbered, put into this capital reserve that saves it for the twenty-twenty-three payment. Covers it pretty much, um, but that dollar numbers plus the, whatever you guys decide you wanna do. I'll just put that there for placeholder.
So that would be a capital reserve fund that any of the, the town could draw. It's just a place to hold the money, so to speak.
Right, 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 and in this case, it will be, and, and you could also eventually close out that capital reserve, but it's cut, at this point with the town growing, it's always gonna be helpful to have
Yeah, a different avenue to, to, to hold the money for
For different projects, not earmarked, but just specifically a vehicle.
Not, yeah, not specifically for road improvement or highway.
Don't you think that, um Don't you think that the people would like to see this earmarked specifically for the bond payment?
No, it's for capital improvements.
Well, I think maybe David's right with this particular number we're talking about.
It says capital reserve fund.
Yep. It could be called the Dunbarton Capital Reserve Fund. That's what the name of the reserve can be, and I did look up the RSA, this follows under those guidelines, but again, if you'd want to be specific to just the
I know when the school did their bond, they made that capital reserve specific to the bond payment. Just to keep it clear, I don't know.
I, I get the, I get your idea of putting in the reserve thing, the only thing that would
It's curious, they can spend it on something else.
Yeah, that's the only thing that would get me is this particular group of selectmen, if they agree to go this route and then things change.
Boards change.
Yeah, the next group says, oh, we're not doing that anymore.
But if the capital, if the, the bond passes
Yep.
We are on the hook for the payment.
Yeah, we have to pay, yes.
They become part of the operating budget.
Right.
So that's just taking the money we have this year and putting it someplace where we're not gonna use it for something else.
And you gotta label the account something, right?
Yeah. Cause going forward in, in twenty-four, twenty-five and on, it's going to be part of your operating budget. I'll, I'll create a new line, a new account specifically for bond payments.
Right. So if that's the case, I think that this should be labeled with the bond. Somewhere in here, like Jeff's, we're clarifying the other, somewhere in here we should say this amount of dollars is gonna be used for the first year of bond payments.
Okay, then it wouldn't be a capital reserve, well, actually it would, but would you wanna create a capital reserve for one year's use?
A lot of times they do. Like, well, do me a favor, read the schools for what they did.
Yep.
The capital reserve wasn't so much for one year, but it was specific to the bond payment, so I wanna make sure that like Jeff says, you know, something happens, the board juggles around, the next board starts spending the money out of this capital reserve.
Because going forward after the first year, we're just reserving what we have in twenty-twenty-one's monies to put towards the bond next year, but we'll get all that money this year to use
Yeah.
To do the work. Okay, so check the school and then maybe
Just see how they word it, I, I just wanted to see if we maybe wanna put something in there referenced to the law on a payment.
Okay, so the name of it is what you're looking for?
I think it's all achievable, we're just
Yep.
Make more of a right track.
And the next one would follow this, and to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of one hundred thousand dollars for additional costs associated with paving. This sum to come from taxation, which is that in the past, or in this case is or this sum to come from surplus, because in the event this fails and that fails, then the, only one sentence that I did strike out, but we would leave, this warrant will be null and void if warrant article two and four passes, so we'll pass over article five.
Um, Lee, when you did that, where are you, this sum to come from taxation in twenty-twenty-two?
Yeah.
Or this sum will come from surplus?
I'm just throwing it out there to let you guys think about it.
I know, but I think it has to come from taxation.
Okay.
Um, like you said there, and then at the bottom, you have to put, uh
The only other thing is, let's say article four and article two fail, and you don't wanna impact the taxes, then you would wanna amend the article on the floor to come from surplus.
And then it says estimated tax impact zero is all we would do if it came out of surplus.
Do you want it to read to just say surplus?
I don't think it can, has to say coming from taxation. And then you just put the zero dollar amount here.
No, taxation is an impact. Sum from surplus is in the alternative to article four failing and article two failing. But you can also put it from taxation and amend it on the floor. So you have one commitment saying this is gonna cost you twenty-five cents, but if these two articles fail, then we're gonna give him article five and we're gonna amend it on the floor to come from surplus.
Our town attorney hasn't read the, right?
Not yet.
When we tried to do this in the past, would you put the part where it comes from surplus on there for it?
Yep. Oh, yeah, you did, yes, you did, that's how, this sum to come from surplus and then it says, um no amount to come from taxation is what I have to add there.
Right.
No amount. Oh, okay. No amount to come from.
And why did you put the line through if this warrant, null and void?
Well, I kinda wanted to put all the three different pieces or options, if we probably have to write it that it comes from the taxes, okay? But if these other, article four and two do not pass, then you wanna give him the money, but you don't wanna raise and appropriate another twenty-five cents because you already have the money that you were gonna put in article four.
Right, so why, why did you scratch the last line out, that's what I'm asking you?
That if these do pass, you don't wanna vote on this one. It's already done.
So why did you scratch it?
I just wanted you to see that if those other two fail, we're gonna wanna leave this warrant article will be null and void if article two is passed. We need to border it completely so that it's clear to the voters that we're not gonna vote on this article five if we get article two and four.
I know, and then you put a line through it, why did you put the line through?
Just so you could see it there.
Cause we wanna leave it, right?
I think we will.
Yes.
Yep, but these are just little options that I want you to consider. From taxes right now, amend it on the floor if these others
I'm agreeing with you, I just wanna know why you put the line through, we're gonna leave it on the warrant.
We're gonna leave it on the warrant, right, yes.
That's all it was at.
Okay, just, just unscratch, all right.
Unscratch it, cause I agree, it should be there.
All right, thank you.
If the town attorney says we can leave it like that.
Yeah, I think you will.
I know we've done that on one other warrant article before.
Right, I think it was John Wigan's fire department.
Yeah, quite often I remember hearing that terminology, just in case. It's a backup.
Cause you have to show any impact to the taxes, speak right at a public hearing, and then change it, amend it on the floor.
We've been raising that hundred thousand over the last few years as a warrant article.
Right, right, okay, so then, number six, this is a standard fourteen thousand dollars for the capital reserve of the revow. Do you wanna read it?
No, we're just doing Jeff's right now.
Oh, just Jeff, okay, yep.
So, and that was Jeff, so we wanna get rid of Jeff's, uh, okay, we're gonna stay here.
Wanna get rid of
One, one other thing I was thinking about is, do we wanna keep line four, a hundred thousand since we got line five, a hundred thousand?
No, I'll say, yeah.
Well, just to keep them even, so it's a, almost a swap in.
Well, well, see, the thing is, this can still fail, and there's a hundred and thirty thousand from surplus. This can still be a hundred thousand because we have a hundred and thirty in the surplus.
On just Jeff's?
Yeah, in his line, he's got some money, we'll go through it.
Well, we still have some outstanding, yeah.
So I was thinking if we keep it a hundred and then just let the rest go in there.
Let the rest
It's just this hundred on this, this capital reserve deposit will not be enough to fund the first payment.
But the payment's not to twenty-twenty-four.
That's right, that's right, but I
So we're gonna have another whole meeting to go through.
Yep.
Right, so we can fund the other balance of it next year.
I agree with you, just an even.
So you get the hundreds, it's gonna be easier when we get in that meeting? Why are you one thirty here and you're a hundred here?
I agree.
We keep it a hundred to a hundred.
Okay.
It'll be tit for tat, swap this in, swap that out.
I, I have two years.
Could be two years to raise that funds.
And then you could always use a hundred, a thirty thousand or whatever it is from surplus again next year, so, okay, perfect, okay?
That's right. No, I, I agree totally, just keep it easy to follow.
Less confusing, you can tell that better, we'll get to that meeting.
No, I, I think there's some truth to that. It's not complicated, but it, it's a lot of different things.
One hundred thousand on that.
All right, I've made the change.
Perfect.
Okay, Jeff, anything else for us?
In the past, we've put a little money aside for future, for truck.
Oh, that, that is in here, that is on Well, I have it on the warrant.
Last year, I mean, we, somebody else came ahead of me a little.
Number twelve, for, for your capital reserve.
And then what do you think, what's your, your flavor on it?
In your packet, gentlemen, I gave you the December thirty-first statement for all the capital reserves. I got that from the trustee of the plus one today.
You don't have to tell me now, I just didn't know if we would take it off.
Well, I just wanted them to be aware of what's in your capital reserve, so right now for highway, you have twenty-nine thousand, three forty, three ninety-four.
Okay, so thirty thousand.
Yeah, we had reduced the amount last year, cause
Fifteen, yeah.
Yeah, because other people had, we, we were in pretty decent shape, I wanted to still kinda follow a little with it.
This is at fifteen, we do have a lot of other things
Yes.
On the agenda this year.
Yep.
Do you think we can possibly get away with less of keeping some money going in? I'm looking for a dollar figure for me.
Yeah, I mean, like I said, last year, our, one of our trucks is a two thousand fifteen.
Yep.
The other one is essentially brand new, it's a year old.
Right.
I don't see us replacing either of those two.
For ten years or so.
Well, one of them probably five years, that'll make it ten years old. The other one, ten years, but as I had made a comment before, I think big picture, we gotta look at the highway department. Is me, it's gonna have to expand somehow.
Right, but not on that, so.
That, that capital reserve number won't fund that. We'll have to do something anyway.
Yeah.
So, I would, to answer your question more directly, yes, I would like to keep it alive with some amount of money. But I understand what you're saying.
Last year was fifteen thousand, this year I've put in a placeholder of fifteen thousand, that's a four cent impact. If you drop it down to ten, it's a three cent impact.
Yeah, I, I mean, you kinda, I know it all adds up, but we're splitting hairs at some point.
Well, we seem like we're splitting hairs, but believe it or not, when we come to setting the tax rate, it seems like all the money's gone.
Yeah, no, I, I get it, but whether, whether it's ten or fifteen, when the vehicles are a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. It helps, but it isn't.
I mean, we left this meeting last year, our last budget review, when we were at a nineteen cent.
Yep.
Increase, and then come into this year.
Yes.
We put another hundred and how much thousand down towards reducing our tax rate, and we were still at the nineteen cents, so.
Yeah. No, I, I'm fine, I mean. I just thought we oughta put something in there to keep it alive, and me, you tell me what dollar figure you're comfortable with. I mean, I just hate to skip a year, you know, totally.
Well, I don't owe much, but why don't we put it at ten?
That's fine, yeah. I get what you're saying.
What do you think, Bob?
Who you think? I really think fifteen isn't a whole lot, you know?
No.
We're talking about five thousand, we're talking about a penny. And I think we can juggle things around so that, you know.
Leaving it at the fifteen?
I, I would, you know, I, I would feel more comfortable because it doesn't take long to run out of money.
No, it doesn't.
And you're like, you have less than thirty thousand.
And I, and I think when we take this stuff to town meeting and we explain it to the residents, they seem pretty receptive and they understand the process. And they, and they know what affects their taxes, but they know we're, we're save, trying to save some money to put towards replacements and stuff.
Use an example, we didn't think we were gonna buy a new cruiser this year.
Yeah.
And one of the cruisers that we thought we're gonna have in that fold seized up, you know? The same thing could happen a- anywhere, you know? So it's a good idea to, I, this isn't a big impact where you're only putting five thousand dollars more. But it could make a difference down the road.
Makes it a little softer on the other side. I agree, that's what I mean, I would just.
Well, we'll leave that at fifteen. It's pretty reasonable anyways, it's not up at thirty or forty.
Yeah, I was gonna say, if we were asking for fifty or forty or something, that, you know, I can understand that, but just to keep us moving in a positive direction.
You want it all for your department?
Pretty much. I'm not gonna lie to you, I do, I want it all. To heck with anybody else. No, I think this.
All right.
All right. Um, we're all set for the container?
Oh, you are?
We got a good place picked out that's gonna be very accessible.
And it's scheduled for Monday.
Yes.
And you're good with that, uh, how's the guy gonna call it when it's sold?
He's gonna sell for Monday.
So, we found a good place, it's, it's nice and aisle away and very easy, accessible, gear out.
A lock. Did we ever get a lock through?
Mike gave, Mike gave Woody that one.
Did, does it work, you know?
Pretty sure it does. He didn't tell me otherwise.
He's using it for nabber.
Cause the one that should, it should be a long neck, make it easier to, when it's frozen or cold.
Yeah, we don't need a key.
Don't need a key?
We don't need a key. I don't wanna know what's in there. No, that's fine. We can get a good location.
All right, thank you for finding that location for us, Jeff, for the storage container and uh. I appreciate the help with that. Does it run?
Me, one ahead, oil pan roll.
Oh, no.
That's a no?
They have COVID down there and they shut down. Vehicle sitting in the lot there, please, I called.
Curious, that's all.
There's a, only an answering service on there now, nobody picks up.
That seems to be the normal, a lot of places, they get, get hard with it.
Think we're getting snow tomorrow?
I don't know, they're all over the place.
Well, they said one to three and then they said zero, and then they back to one to three.
Yeah, it depends where, if it goes up. We're gonna get an amount of snow, yeah. But I, hopefully it won't be freezing rain and ice this time. We've got enough of that for the year.
We have a storm warning in our area.
Yeah.
That's what they said tonight. It's a storm warning, but, you know, things change.
Well, thank you for your support, I appreciate it.
Did I talk with you about the walk through on that building? Okay, we're doing a walk through at ten tomorrow, but it may be changed cause of snow.
Yeah.
Still waiting to hear back.
We should be on the road.
Yeah. Anyway, thank you for your support, this is Brock Eppen.
Okay, thanks, Jeff.
Yep, we'll see you.
Okay.
You made Jeff.
Um, I'm gonna ask one thing um, for the board here. Do we wanna go out of order and hit dawn now? Cause we're gonna have some time in case.
Yeah, but he's also included in the order.
Right, so we'll do this here again and the warrant.
Okay.
We'll do the warrant first?
Uh, whatever you wanna do first, I just wanna bring you up on the agenda, cause you're down here quite a ways, Dawn, and.
Yeah.
Can we do the warrant?
Okay, see Walter?
Well, we'll do, first of all, we'll do the funding and then the warrant, so that they all kinda run together. This is our request to recoup interest from the perpetual care account.
Okay.
You have a copy of that here.
And.
I do, okay.
We had to uh. I got one for you. Uh. We use figures when we came in to recoup this that were already in the books.
Okay.
And that, so uh, going through it, uh, we've been recovering somewhere around anywhere from twelve to fifteen hundred dollars. What we found, now that we started in two thousand twenty, putting uh, all the graves into the SIM system. The software we have, we've got an actual count which reflects here.
That changes, okay.
So, basically, even though we were using the wrong numbers before, we did not, we left money on the table, is what happened.
Yeah.
And that, but now we're, we're changing that, and so we're gonna get a larger sum, so that means we're gonna be able to. Uh, add that to the general fund, and we can also, uh, our landscaping is going up to. Eleven thousand six hundred for the next three years, so you can imagine, you know, it'll, it'll increase uh, even greater. And we'll wipe that out, then we'll go to court, have the uh, uh, petition to court. To allow the balance to go into the general fund, correct?
Correct.
So, that way we'll have that money uh, for the town. This'll give you some idea, the Sims, all those Xs represent graves that were left off in their report. And we've now added those in. As you can see, there was quite a few, it's a section right out here. And that, so we're getting those all added in, which are included as much as to the best of our ability right now. To have them added in. There might be one or two more somewhere along the lines.
Okay.
But this is as honest as we can do, so we're, we're correcting, you know, past errors and uh, omissions.
Okay.
With that.
I have a question for you on this. Is this a final number, is this a draft?
That is a final.
Okay, so technically the board can use this as revenue on their own revenue to report. Put listed as revenues that'll be coming in because we're gonna request it from the trustee of the trust fund.
So, but it'll be earmarked for them anyway?
Nope, it's gonna be part of your surplus, so basically you're funding his budget, he's helping you offset your budget by giving you.
Oh, is that, oh, that comes, I thought that was uh.
Five forty, no.
When it comes.
Well, that's going to the general fund.
It does, okay.
Well, if you know about it, you have to put it in your, your revenues. If you don't and it comes in as unindicated, you accept it. And then the board decides to just leave it in the fund, or let them use it for additional expenses, so.
Okay. All right.
Here, okay. This was phase one that we did last year. And this is the way it came out. These yellow areas are areas that we did nothing with and that. We put cobblestones along the front of these units here, and then of course, up and around the ditches here. You can see, you know, the outcome, you know, I, I feel it's very attractive and very uh, marketable. And we did that.
Turn around and just show it to the public one time.
There we go. And these will be on display.
Where will those be on display?
All the, all the warrants that we had last year got completed and no tax dollars were used for them. This is phase two, and what we have here are the couples. You know, two, two burials in one, one spot, so they can use one headstone. And we've got a couple of them sold already, but we're just gonna develop number uh, nine and eight here. And right here's the parking area, and that way we have choices between the two that will be developed. We'll have two benches here, and the rest of this here will be done. We're gonna have a six foot wide path going down through here, and this will be lined with cobblestones along here. And it runs into the road. Uh, that was initially designed to be a road. But we'd have to take out uh, plots in order to have a turnaround down there. So we figured a walking path would be a lot better. And we'll take it all the way to the fence. And then this will be uh, phase five or six or something like that later down the road. But we'll have enough inventory at the Lasses for several years, you know, between the uh, the three by threes that we did last year and this. And it'll help uh, with the uh, pages corner, you know, and finish that south end.
Okay, again, give it one time to the public?
Sure. Question after? Okay, thank you. So, with that warrant article. This is how we're going to fund it. And we ask for your support.
On the warrant is that article thirteen.
Okay.
Which I've already added.
Thirteen, okay. I didn't have it on. Lucky number thirteen.
Okay, Dawn, now, tell me the difference between this fund here that you just got the eighteen seven nine.
We're recovering money that is the interest on the perpetual care.
So that perpetual care and these two aren't?
No.
Okay.
We're getting one from the trust fund that we had last year, the balance of that, and then from our. It's uh, expendable trust, that we, when we sell something, the money goes into that. So it's money that we have all on hand.
Okay, so so far I see, um, you're raising ten thousand five hundred seventy-five dollars. Of which eighty-eight forty-three is from the cemetery maintenance trust fund.
Correct.
And seventeen thirty-two from the cemetery expendable trust fund.
Correct.
One was established in nineteen eighty-eight, one was twenty sixteen, so no dollar values to come from taxation.
Correct.
And that's what you just showed us.
Correct.
So Dave, if you looked at the trust funds accounts, the one he's talking about using is the cemetery fund, which has eight thousand eight hundred.
Yeah.
Forty-three, he's gonna wipe this out. And then he has cemetery expendable, he has six thousand one hundred fifty-two.
What'd you use seventeen hundred of?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And see, that, that fund will grow during the year, cause as we sell plots and pre-planning things along this line, so.
Yeah. Okay, we had a question from.
Yeah, I'm just curious, Dawn, what is, what are the plots, these Kremeneh plots go for, like, what do you?
Uh, the, the double plot goes for one seventy-five, and the singles go for one hundred.
And how many do you have down here? Not, not here, but I mean at pages, I'm just curious.
Uh, same, it's right, same price of both.
No, no, but how many do you, how many sites do you have?
We're sixty-two percent sold out here.
But how many are there?
Uh, a hundred and ten.
Okay, and how many are down there?
Uh, you'll have.
Approximately.
What is it, uh, thirty, sixty, uh, the uh, four by fours at seventy-five with the three by threes that we did last year.
Okay. Just, you know, it's a lot of money going into these, and I'm just wondering, is that paying for itself, or is that?
It will pay for itself, because basically we're using uh, money that we, we earned. And we're gonna do marketing, we're gonna be very progressive to get people to buy more.
Well, right, right, but my, I was just getting, what I was getting at was, the money that we're spending, are we gonna recoup all that selling these plots? Or are we gonna be underwater with it?
Uh, no, we'll recruit some plus.
All of it.
Because we sell the benches.
Yeah, yeah.
And we, we do turn a profit there, that goes back into the fund, the expendable trust fund.
Okay.
And that, so that will recoup.
I'm just curious how that, how that money was working out, if it was working out to our benefit or?
Oh, it'll work out to our benefit, definitely.
Okay, all right, just curious. Cause I don't know the numbers, I don't know how many got there and there, I didn't know.
We've got, uh, we'll have four, four benches that we'll sell, we'll make about seven fifty per bench, give or take a, a couple bucks there. So it'll, you know, it'll pretty well, uh, you know, get the cash flow, and that doesn't count, you know, they have to buy cemetery plots too. So that's on there. Uh, in uh, phase one, we have fifteen sold plus a bench already.
Oh, phase one down at pages.
At pages.
Yeah, right, 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 yeah. Okay, yeah, I was just curious how the numbers were coming out, that's all.
Yeah, so that's three thousand dollars right there, and the whole warrant article was uh, eighty-five hundred.
Yeah, okay, okay.
So, you know, we've already recruited some of that.
Okay, yeah, I was just curious how that.
No, good question, good question.
Okay.
Thank you.
Now you had another warrant article to go over, or is that?
No, that's it.
So, originally I had four, Dave.
Yeah.
And after his meeting with the cemetery trustee, you withdrew these three, so we only have one article.
Yeah, one article, that's all we're gonna do, and we're paying for it.
Wow, that's easy, coughing. Okay, great. Well, that saves a lot of yelling back and forth. All right, now go talk to the other departments.
There, there's, there's a lot of things that are on the ballot this year.
Yeah.
And it's, it's a, a business decision. We'll have enough inventory there.
Yeah.
And we're gonna, you know, to do some banners, we're gonna have an open house out there once it's all done. And, you know, we want, we want people to play in, you know, right now with the, the health situation with COVID and everything else. You don't know what's gonna happen.
Right.
And so, uh, along those lines, February twelfth, Valentine's weekend, we're having a vaccine clinic over here at the school again. Nine to two, so.
Will you put that on the website?
Anybody can go. I just.
I'm glad you know another one, cause as it's increasing here, it can't hurt.
Mm-hmm, happen to have a, a poster, and if you've got someplace, you know, if you can do it at the lumberyard or something like that. Why put it up, because everybody's eligible.
I have one at the office, and that's what I.
Yeah, maybe in our billboard outside even.
Yep.
Yeah, I got one out there.
Yep.
So that's a, you know, we went from four people at the first one to what, a hundred and eighty-some odd at the second?
Seventy.
Hundred and seventy on the second one, so.
Right, yeah, yeah, right.
So, you know, and we're, we expect, you know, cause they're, they're doing the boosters now for the teens, they're doing, uh, a lot of people. They have to wait six months from their second shot.
Right.
Now it's five months, so a lot of more people will be there, and then we'll have another one on the fifth of March. So, we're, you know, and this is all sponsored by Reese Across Dunbar, and uh, and the school board. They cleared it, you know, so that we could, uh, you know, have it in the library once again.
Yeah.
And with your permission, I'll get the uh, uh, stanchions again from the uh, trailer and put those out. Cause we, we needed them, cause we had them going down the hall and everything else last time.
The, uh, the only thing I'd like to do is. The only thing I'd like to do is make sure we run it by Linda as well when we get them. Because we gave you the permission to take them, but she kind of controls the.
Oh, sure.
So.
Well, Woody has the key now, they put a padlock on it.
Yep, so we just go by and ask Linda as well as our sounds, I think would be good.
Yeah.
I'm not sure if you heard Jeff, but we did get another twenty-foot trailer for storing some items, and it is gonna be at the highway department.
Okay.
So that'll be a combination of some of your items that are stored on this upstairs and downstairs there, they're gonna need to be cleaned out of there.
Okay.
When they start the sprinkler system.
Yeah, I saw the pipes downstairs.
And also some of Mary's stuff in there, so make sure to use the appropriate amount of room in there.
Do you want his flags taken out of that one and put over here, or?
I don't think for now, because he has quite a few things there still.
Yeah, I've got a couple of things on there, there's some.
I'd like to keep the flags here, because that's a nice, clean, brand-new, easy item to keep there.
Yeah.
And it's not interfering with Linda's items, but the rest of your items here, we'd like to go in here.
Okay.
All right?
Yeah.
Because the building's gonna start getting occupied there with contractors and stuff, so.
Yeah. Uh, we'll get those out then. I've got my worker bees from my pick-em-up truck.
Yeah, upstairs, those stanchions that are standing there, those like.
The flag and poles, yeah. We'll get those all taken out in the warrant, and then.
That's coming in, that's coming in Monday.
Huh?
The trailer's coming in Monday.
Coming in Monday, okay. Is it gonna be as nice as the other one?
I think so.
Yeah, it's brand-new, it's a twenty-four, it's brand-new.
Oh, yeah.
If it's not, let us know, because we pay the premium for it, so.
Okay. Sounds good.
I'll go check it out once it comes in too. Hey, I just wanted to say, Don, on behalf of the Board of Selectmen, the cemeteries look really nice with the wreaths, and the wreath on the fences is really.
Thank you.
It's really nice to look by and see, you know, that, at least that they're getting some representation, you know, during the seasons and stuff, it's nice to see.
Well, that's what we want. You know, we want people to be proud of their cemetery. And, you know, part of our marketing program this year is to have an open house out there, make more people aware of it. Do stuff with the community page, and just, you know, get people to pre-plan.
But I think by doing all of them, you know, you go up, even the one on Rush, you know, that's not forgotten about up there, you know? Plenty of wreaths on it, it looks nice.
Yeah. So, yeah, because we've got eighteen veterans in there. You know, and we've got that many on the post.
Well, thanks for coming in, and thank your, thank your board for cutting everything down as much as you possibly could. Bob, you got anything for them?
Nope.
Okay. Natalie, let's go through the rest of the warrants, I guess.
Okay.
The first warrant is just a general warrant. About hog dreams and town officials. And then warrant number two is the bond. Which the bond is for the road maintenance of a million three. And we've talked about that, and I think that that wording on the bond was done by our town attorney, so I think that one we'll separate.
Yep, we'll just add the word gating in there, and then, once I get a confirmed number of warrants, so we'll do a review of the town attorney again. And the next one's the operating budget, which I've not filled out yet, so you can pass over that.
Lee, does that darkened letter wanna go up higher to the top? You were notifying me at the same place at seven o'clock in the evening?
No, that has to come after the bonds.
It does?
Yep, it has to come after the bond. To act upon the subject, following subjects of the bonds have to be discussed first, I think they're on a ballot, or, yeah, a separate ballot.
Okay, and then.
We discussed number four, we're gonna change that to a hundred.
Yep.
And I'll check on the name of the.
Yeah, just to see if we wanna include the bond on it, right? And we talked about number five.
Yep, I'll take out, some come from taxation and do the same to come from surplus. And then in the event, these other two articles, we'll leave the wording that this article will be null-avoided, or Article two or four bound. So that you might, we'll pass over on that article. And that would be no impact to taxes.
Okay. Yeah, just like, no amount to come from taxation.
Correct.
Just like you did on the other ones, okay, great. Okay. So we're on item number six, right?
Yeah, and this is the same warrant we had a premier year, and that's just to put a little bit of money into the revaluation capital reserve. Currently, they have sixty-one thousand three sixty-two. The assessor chairman, Mary LaValle, asked for the warrant article. Board has a final decision on the amount, but this is what we put in there every year. And that's to cover a revale, which we will be scheduled to have in twenty twenty-five.
And what was the amount of that revale, what was the last one?
This last one was fifty thousand, but it was a statistical, and we haven't had a full revale in about fifteen years. I'm not sure how that's gonna play with the power of revenue, when they're going to recommend that we go for a more thorough revaluation.
And what's in their fund now, sixty?
Sixty-one.
So this would make it seventy-five?
Yeah.
I think we'll leave it for this year, but that could be lowered to ten, ten, I would think sometime.
Yeah, September board, you can do it this year, whatever you decide.
You wanna bring it to ten, Bob, or do you wanna?
I'll leave it at the fourteen, because like you said, that was the statistical. And they may, at some point in time, want a full revale there.
Right, and all these statisticals are based on plots that the assessor has to pick up. So where we're getting a lot, in the more new development around the town, there'll be added costs to that revale, whether it's statistical or.
Yeah, especially once those houses start coming in, so. Okay, we'll leave it.
Okay.
Seven?
Uh, that's the standard transfer station capital reserve deposit, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of twenty thousand dollars to be added to the transfer station vehicle or capital reserve fund in two thousand four, established in two thousand fourteen for this. And as summarized in Capital Improvement Plan, this sum to come from taxation in twenty twenty-two. Estimated twenty twenty-two taxes, tax rate impact is five cents. Currently, in the transfer station capital reserve, there's twenty-seven thousand one ninety-three.
Now. I don't wanna cut it in half.
So those, you know, are actually.
We just cut it out.
Only because you're looking at, you're looking at getting a McCann crusher possibly.
That's another article.
And I know he's talking about replacing the skid steer possibly in twenty twenty-three, but I think that skid steer is in good enough shape to run in some.
You know, I think you're not gonna get much more when you sell it for surplus.
Right.
So you might as well run it till it's dead and then sell it, because somebody will buy it and fix it themselves, you know? But you're not gonna get any more, so.
And if we run into a mine, we do always have the rainy day fund if there's a huge issue, so.
Well, we've done that so far, you know, as we've corrected problems, as they've come along there.
So let's make that ten.
Change it to ten, okay. So that'll be about a, I don't have anything here, this. It's gonna be about, oh, three cents, that'll be the impact.
Yeah. Yeah, you had five there, figured two and a half and you round up, right?
Yeah.
So little point zero three on that one.
Yeah. And Article eight, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of up to eighteen thousand dollars, eighteen thousand one hundred dollars for the purpose of purchasing, I think, and installation of a can crusher, this sum to come from fund balance surplus, no amount to come from taxation in twenty twenty-two. Now, this came as a recommendation through this email that you received today from Woody. He said he'd gotten his prices to have a crusher of ten thousand seven hundred plus twenty-four hundred dollars for freight. And then electrical for installation of no more than five, so he says it should be eighteen-ten or less. So this is worded, so it goes up to. And then what he's claiming is he has surplus within his budget. The board decides whether you want him to use his surplus. But as of this report today, he has thirty thousand six seventy-seven left in his surplus. Of this twenty-one hundred.
Now, just to keep this clean for the account, Lee. If he's using it for this, we can't designate it out of, we can designate it out of surplus, but not his surplus.
Correct, bottom line, but he's, he's basically saying, I'm giving taxpayers back some of my operating budget. But bottom line is what the total line is, one seventy-three.
Nothing's encumbered here.
Nope, nothing at all.
I don't have any problem with that, because we're still getting some money back out of them on the surplus. And as long as it's still coming out of any additional taxation. And we reduce the other one by ten thousand dollars. What's your thought on that, Bob?
Is that, was that the only quote that he got, by the way?
Yep.
Because, you know, I'm getting tired of hearing single source.
Right, but typically, what happens is, this is a quote, when it comes time, if this passes, he has to do his due diligence and do three quotes. If it's, if he's anticipating it's coming in over ten grand. Because he may be able to find it someplace locally where he doesn't have to pay the freight charge. And then, and then he doesn't expend.
So it's up to that amount of money.
Right. So this is kind of like a placeholder, a number that he feels comfortable that will cover the cost. I mean, he did the same thing with his backhoe, using a bat, and that was one thing I asked him to be clear on, is a new purchase, I should probably put it in there, a new can crusher with installation. Last year, he had a backhoe, and it was a used backhoe, and then when, by the time he got his bids out, his, the time elapsed, and he didn't have enough money to cover the cost to buy that. But he did finally find one, and requested some funds from his account, from his budget, to offset that purchase.
Yep, I remember that.
So.
I'm okay with that one, as long as we cut the other one down to ten, Bob.
Sure, I, I don't have a problem. The thing, in my head, I'm thinking is, I'm curious is to, I know they ship out all that stuff.
He's saying that he'll be able to ship more tonnage in the same packs from when he was in here at his meeting. I'm not sure that's.
With additional labor, that's.
Yeah.
That's, I'm thinking of the guys that were talking about reaching in and getting the stuff out, so you've got people handling cans, crushing cans. But I don't have a problem with having the warrant article there and see what happens with it.
And surplus is okay with you?
Yeah.
To use that, those funds, okay?
Can I say something? I would check Amazon for this, because if you're a Prime member, Randy Bauer got a lift for like sixteen hundred bucks, and he got free shipping out of it and everything else, I mean, it's a big, you know, list the car up and that. So I would check Amazon, because.
Not bad, yeah.
You might get free shipping out of it, and that'd save you a ton.
Well, as long as they have this as kind of a commercial item, a can crusher, but.
Yeah.
Maybe they haven't.
They, they got everything.
They outsource a lot of their sales.
Won't hurt to try.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I guess when the tide comes, that's what you wanna do. Because, you know, I have a real, a real problem when people come to you with one number, and they stay with that number, and we don't see any change. And sometimes, you're more comfortable working with that person, but it doesn't hurt, they get out there. You know, look, look at how many people you're trying to get on the sprinkler, you ended up with a few, but at least the reach was out there.
Right.
People were responding, and then they just backed off.
Yeah.
They can make up their mind after.
Yeah, even on the contractors, we're having some issues having to go to some newer ones, some different ones. Sometimes they can't fit it in, sometimes they can't fit it.
Yeah.
Worked on that on the way in. Okay, going to number nine.
Yeah, Article nine is to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of sixty thousand dollars to be added to the fire department emergency vehicle capital reserve fund established in two thousand and fourteen for this purpose. And as summarized in the capital improvement plan, this sum to come from taxation in twenty twenty-two. Estimated twenty twenty-two tax rate impact is fifteen cents.
And how much is in that one?
And currently, the statement says he has three hundred and thirty, but he just spent a hundred and twenty. It's on order of being manufactured now, so he'll be dropping his balance down to two hundred and ten thousand two eighty-eight.
That's a lot of flex seal.
And he was emphasizing that there's a big, huh?
That's a lot of flex seal.
So the voters voted to spend down to a hundred and twenty thousand, that really leaves a true balance of two hundred and ten thousand two eighty-eight. And John Wigan, during his budget discussion, asked to keep it at the sixty thousand, because there's a big ticket item that's coming down.
Yeah, I have no problems, because he was the first one that jumped on board quite a few years ago. We asked him if he could modify his, and he dropped it down.
Yep.
Because we were trying to, we were trying to recover money, you know, for the rainy day fund, and.
Yep, that's right.
So he did, he did that, and it cost him, you know, a little bit, so.
Okay.
So we leave that one at the same.
Well, at least till we get to the bottom and we see how.
Yeah.
Much it affects us all.
Putting the summary together. Next one is the police cruiser, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of up to fifty-six thousand dollars to purchase a new cruiser with equipment and installation of equipment. The sum to come from taxation, impact, estimated tax impact of twenty twenty-two is fourteen cents.
No. No.
Got it wrong, am I?
No, we gotta have a portion of that to come out of the fund.
There's zero in the fund. There's like four thousand dollars in there.
No, that's all right.
In the special duty fund?
How can that be, they didn't do any special duty this year?
They did two thousand dollars, and we drained it down with last year's warrant.
You're kidding me?
And the treasurer said, no, I don't want to deplete that fund, because it's a special account, that she has to maintain a minimum. And there's no money there.
We had money from two sources last year, right, we took.
Surplus? No, it was taxes and special duty fund.
And one of those, they must had some money somewhere away.
They didn't do that much, because remember, Joe did most of the.
Yeah, and this year he was.
Did you review last year's warrant, see?
I know they had money from two funds, because I already calculated them. Cost us like ten thousand dollars to work with that. I didn't realize their fund was gonna be zero.
Yeah.
Well, they have, look at, let's see, I have a capital reserve fund we have.
Oh, we just, well, that's the police cruiser, capital reserve, which they now have eleven thousand dollars in.
So we're gonna take ten of that.
Do you wanna withdraw ten from there, leave a dollar again? Well, then we.
No, if you have eleven thousand, I'm leaving a thousand.
Okay.
That'll cut it down, that's why I'm looking here, because I'm looking for another ten thousand bad fund.
Last year, it was twenty-two thousand in police special duty detail and thirty-two from taxes.
How much thirty-two from taxes?
Thirty-two thousand from taxes, eight cent impact. It was fifty-four thousand, this year it's gone up a little bit, he's gotten his state bid price, so fifty-six.
How many vehicles do we have?
Well, you lost one, there was a newer one. You sold the.
Crown deck.
The Crown deck.
Yeah.
You're gonna lose the Chiefs thing, it's on its way out, right?
Yeah, yeah.
So we're down to four?
Is it four or three?
I think it might be three after Chiefs is gone, but I can double check.
It's three.
We should double check that, just to see. And then I'd like to know who's using them and when, where, why. I don't want it to go by, and there's always two sitting there, and we've gotten a new one.
Well, you know, we're probably gonna get Joe back in rotation to do some special duties.
Yeah.
Because you got a new officer coming on. And that's what he was doing, most of the, he was generating that income.
So take ten thousand.
Okay, well, it just had to be ten thousand.
Ten K from?
Capital reserve?
Capital.
So I guess the next one might be.
So forty-six thousand, so that will bring it down to.
All right, can I make a proposal here? The next article is to deposit ten thousand into the capital reserve, do we wanna bypass that for this year?
No.
Leave it there, and then just.
Leave it there and keep it standard. Or you can put twenty thousand.
No, take, do the ten thousand here from surplus, or from taxes, and then wipe this out. Because this, delete eleven.
I can't delete eleven, because then it's gonna be gone forever. I can make it a thousand if you wanted to, but I can't, I don't wanna delete it, I.
Only because if you're taking ten out here, and then you're putting ten in here, you're doing the same thing twice for paperwork.
Yeah, but this isn't in there yet.
But there is eleven, you're taking out ten.
Yeah.
And then you're gonna put ten right back in.
For the next car. You follow me?
Yeah.
You can't just delete it.
Well, um.
You can't, I love to do a capital reserve all over again.
No, 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 okay, so what I'm getting is don't touch the capital reserve, reduce this to a thousand or, I mean, you're you're just duplicating what you're doing here. You're taking out ten out of the capital reserve and you're putting in ten.
But I want to keep that ten every year going there, because it's a, we decided that ten thousand dollars every two years with their police duty special duty fund, every two years we can replace a vehicle, so I know that dollar.
Yeah, because you're not, you're taking money out, but you're not replacing it with anything.
So please zero the.
Right, but if you don't take it out, then this is the substitute for the ten on the article before. But you want to continue to put ten in, okay, I got it.
Just because I know that every two years with their special duty fund and this ten thousand dollars, we can fund a fifty six thousand dollar vehicle.
But what I'm getting is I can tell the office administrator to pay ten thousand dollars on this one and not touch that. It's the same thing, they're doing the same thing.
I know.
Except for.
He's saying to move the money from eleven to ten.
Yeah, but I think it's, it's good for the people to see what you're saying, because then next year they'll see it. The year after they'll see, just like the.
It's something you can follow.
It's just like the fire truck.
It becomes a constant.
It's gonna be an expected expense and if you move that and next year you ask for it, they're gonna be like, what the heck? They want none.
Because I know from every two years, love twenty thousand in this. And then we're gonna have thirty two thousand from their special duties and it's gonna make a truck. Where we've kind of adjusted that number, because it was five once and then we moved it to ten.
No, we actually had two years, one was a thousand to start it.
Yeah.
Second year was deposit ten thousand, so that's where we got the eleven.
Yeah, because when we did the last car, I could see from their special duty that it would work, but obviously it wouldn't.
Right.
You know, someone questioning that, you can always say that you're just returning money into the capital reserve so we don't deplete it and so that there's a constant.
Yeah.
Because we're trying to fund a vehicle every five years.
Versus all.
Two, actually, is what we had it.
Versus all at once, you know?
Right.
Yeah, but it's, it, like I said, we do it with the fire truck and we do it with Jeff. And it's a good thing, so that way people see that every year you're gonna have to put some money in the bank for that stuff, that's all.
Well, hopefully with this truck, it gets us ahead, because if not, I gotta start pedal biking around.
Okay, so it's just extra paperwork for me, take out ten, put ten in.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so now we're done, we already talked about. On the highway capital work there.
It was, it was crazy.
Sounds okay, all right. Next one is, we've already talked about, that's the pages corner on cemetery permits. And that's all from.
Yeah, that's a dead issue.
By the way, we're cutting trees, probably later this month with this cold weather, the ground be hard. And I've put in driveway markers and yellow tape, so they don't hit any of the stones or anything like when they move their equipment back there. So it looks like a crime scene right now, but we got, there's a lot of dead bodies around. Yeah, a lot of dead bodies, yeah.
Well, that's good that they're gonna do while the snow is there and so on.
Okay, Article fourteen, you guys.
That's the milfoil.
Milfoil, you voted to accept that milfoil grant last year.
Yeah.
And that's no impact to taxes. And then Article fifteen is a placeholder for the resident that requested this through the town clerk's office to propose a resolution to stop the puppy mill pipeline. And when I consulted with our attorney. He said.
It says in pet stores in town. We don't have any pet stores in town.
We don't have pet stores, I I guess that would be a question I could ask them. But his response was the proposed warrant article is only asking the voters to take a position on this subject. Is not proposing any sort of regulation, prohibition or retail sale of dogs and cats in pet stores in town. Assuming it receives the sufficient signatures as verified by the town clerk, it should be placed on the warrant as awarded. If the voters approve at town meeting, there is nothing the town, for the town to enforce, it simply expresses the will of the voter.
Yeah. Talking about extra work. There you go. I would like to check that.
We don't even have, we don't even have a pet store.
I know.
Which would be a positive.
Do we have to put it on the warrant article?
Even if we don't have a pet store?
He says it's just voicing the opinion of a voter. Because we do have people who sell dogs privately.
We have to bring out the pet stores.
You can have a pet, you can have a pet store and sell iguanas and snakes and things, because it doesn't mention anything.
They're just trying to go, I say, one of the slugs, so we have no.
No pet stores.
Pets stores in town.
No, no pet stores.
And see if that's a bunch of, I don't want to put stuff on there for nothing.
Okay. I'll follow up with that warrants.
So, tag to that? On needs, just the warrants? Do you have them up here or over there?
I'm gonna review those again after our change is up and then I'll do a summary report, can both?
Leaning the fourteen cent went down to almost ten cents.
For the vehicle?
We took ten thousand off the vehicle.
Yep, and that's three cents lower, so it's gonna be about eleven cents.
About eleven cents?
Yeah.
So.
Get a little stuff coming here.
Let's do this, like, if we can do the sense of impact later.
Yeah, I'm doing summary sheets, you can look at it all together.
Okay. So we reviewed the proposed two thousand twenty two warrants.
Yep. I didn't say there's one warrant. I was gonna ask two warrants.
Seemed like a lot more than one. Review the CRF December statement balance or adjustments.
So basically, the reason for this is this is what allows the board to decide whether they want to warrant article amounts based on what's in the balance of capital reserve. So I was kind of giving you that information as we went along. This is a helpful tool for you guys.
I'm gonna put that at this, so I can review, okay?
Yep, that's, that's why we have it on here.
Okay. And thank you for reading those off to us, I'd have to dig mine out of your time.
Yeah.
Okay, proposed operating budget?
Can we go through it real quick?
Yeah, this is the bond amount, you're doing us that for background paperwork as well.
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, I've reviewed the final numbers that were outstanding for the operating budget. And then I also went ahead and reviewed the New Year's request and the difference of the increase or decrease for the boards.
Okay, let's go through that page by page.
All right, Executive Group include includes four accounts. Board of Selectmen, Town Administrator, Secretary Town Office, Recording Secretary. Called Executive, that sees an increase of twelve thousand eighty seven dollars. The majority, this is based on a three percent increase. And the majority of that increase, the board approved in the middle of the year last year, increased one of my part-time staff to four days. His salary hourly rate times the eight hours, times the fifty two weeks is an increase of eight thousand two hundred and twelve dollars. So that's the majority of that twelve thousand eighty seven increase.
Can you tell me what, what went to four days?
Secretary too.
Were they three now?
They were three and last year, we found the money for me to be able to increase him to four days a week. And that's been working out really well.
Okay.
Any questions?
No, I don't remember going over it.
Okay. Recording Secretary, Town Office, that's the person who records your, transcribes your minutes. I budgeted for thirty eight meetings, added four extra meetings for incidentals, non-public that I'm not able to assist with. And that came up to four thousand eight oh nine, so that's just a slight rounding. So the bottom line Executive Group is an increase of twelve thousand eighty seven. Election Town Clerk. Her numbers, that was represents this increase of six thousand eight hundred and twelve dollars. And I would like the board to also revisit her mileage requests that she proposed during her budget discussion. I did not include an line item in these nonaccounts. So if the board decides to do that, this is something that has not been included in the bottom line. You can revisit it later, but I just want to keep that in back of your mind that we need to still discuss that mileage. So currently, the way it sets with her accounts that she presented, there's an increase of six thousand eight hundred and twelve dollars.
Okay.
Audit Contract Services, that's a multi-year contract, sixteen thousand for the contract itself. And Reconciliation Support Services, three thousand, so I've decreased it by one thousand dollars. Eric's doing really well, but he still needs some support and I don't have the time.
Can you decrease that by two, since you've got the dollar amount covered? Or do you think it'd be higher than twenty twenty one?
Oh, it will be higher than twenty twenty one.
Because you were at sixteen.
I still have some outstanding, outstanding bill from co-oss advisors, because they're still working with them, but it's contracted.
As little as you can do?
I think so, yes. I mean, I could probably drop it five hundred.
No, I don't want to do five hundred, if you had another thousand, you're having a problem.
I'll look at that again.
Bob, as we're going through, if you see something, just speak right up, okay?
Yeah.
I don't want to act like I'm stepping over you there, okay? We're on the second page, right?
Yeah, page two, so we're now actually in Financial Administration. Category is the forty one fifty, that encompasses elected officials here, dues, references, postage, office equipment impair, computer support. There, that line saw an increase of three thousand ninety nine. Medical services, fees and services, printing, town offices, I got the town reports quote back. I'm adding twenty five additional copies at four seventy two per copy. So I need to increase that line slightly to fifty nine hundred from fifty two hundred. And the remainder of the lines, the total increase, which runs into page three.
So hold on, at the top of this page, second page, Ron.
Yeah.
This whole tax collector section, there's no increase in that section?
Yes, there is, there's a, I wonder why they didn't show it there? Oh, no, no, that variance over and under is what is spent, if there's any left. I can get rid of that if it's confusing.
No, I'm just looking, normally you did highlights for us, see?
Yeah.
In this column, it's the total one. It's not here, right?
It actually goes all the way to the page four, it's all the group accounts for forty one fifty. See those account numbers off the left? You'll get a tax collector, right? See, this, this four one five oh goes all the way through these, but because I'm putting notes in it, it's shifting all the numbers apart.
So there was no notes here?
This is actual spent, there's zero left. This is the budget, this is requested budget, which is a, represents the three percent. So there's really little, the elected officials, the three, three percent.
Computer support went up to three thousand?
Computer support, yes, three thousand ninety nine, yeah. And that's just based on true actual expenses, ten users for Microsoft. And then the other, so bottom line with the decreases and increases within this category of financial administration, there was a total increase of three thousand eight hundred and twenty seven. A little decrease in education. Slight increase for trainings, we have a new welfare moderator that has requested some training. Any questions in administration?
No.
Assessing, they presented a budget primarily with a three percent increase on the payroll, less an increase of sixty eight dollars.
Okay.
Legal, we went over budget. Actually, we did not go over budget. Decreased the selectmen's legal, increased the zoning legal.
We should not be increasing that. Because we're just switching it around, really.
Do you want to?
I want to make that zero note.
Want to flat on that section?
Yeah, because.
So that means zoning, we went over. Four assessors, we have pending appeals, I don't know that there's gonna be a lot of appeals. And then selectmen, that's hit or miss.
So I think we should just juggle them if need be, because.
We keep it flat?
Some are high, some are low, so.
Just adjust the numbers so that they, it's a flat budget. All right, I can do that.
You good with that, Bob? Like, we had a little extra money, but they used more here, so we just juggled it.
That's what we did.
It's the same legal fund, so.
Yep, it is, it's just running in the red on one. Social Security, I crunched my numbers, there's an increase of forty, four thousand on the Social Security, Medicare's, just a very slight increase. Retirement, you can see how I overspent sixteen thousand six thirty nine, that's based on budgets from other departments that weren't included in the overall calculations from last year. This year I took a very close look at that and included all their potential lines, so we have an increase, which is primarily right there. Workers' Comp. Was adjusted a little bit lower from its original cost, was supposed to be nineteen sixty, nine sixty five. Covid stipends were removed from our reported wages. Vacation longevity's gone up a little bit, we have a couple of new people that are now qualified. So total personnel increase is seven thousand four hundred and forty one.
Leaning underneath the health insurance?
Yeah.
It looks like it went down, but I don't see the parentheses on the eighty, eight thousand two dollars.
Eight thou, that's an excess, that's lapsing, and the reason for that is because when we got the new officer in the police department, I had to potentially budget for family healthcare. When he finally signed on, he signed up for a single healthcare, so that's the cost savings there that we did not spend. So based on what, open enrollment was the month of December. So the, the number that I have put there, eighty thousand five forty, is a solid number for current plans that the employees enrolled in. The only thing we can change outside of enrollment is if somebody gets married and has to change their plan from a single to a two person.
So the variance should be less, right? Shouldn't that be in parentheses? Your budget was ninety seven hundred.
That's incorrect.
We spent eighty nine.
Right, but up above, retirement went up. So again, they, all the account numbers, four one five five, there are notes in between two of them, so it looks like it's a different group. But it starts from the top of the page and it goes right to where my notes are, so forty one fifty five stops. I probably should have highlighted it.
Let's see, forty one fifty five, forty one fifty five.
Yeah, so from here to here, there's an increase of.
Just follow my questions.
Yeah.
The budget shows ninety seven. We spent eighty nine. The variance over or under is eighty nine.
We had, that's lapsing to the fund. This is overspent here, parentheses, this is lapsing to the general fund. And that would normally, I had to budget for a family plan last year. So that's why you're seeing a decrease, it went from ninety seven seven down to eighty thousand five forty for health, for a couple of things. The health rates decreased six and a half percent, was it, or was it seven and a half percent?
Six and a half.
Six and a half, I think. So for the combined accounts within Personnel Administration is an increase of seven thousand four forty one.
Okay.
Okay. Planning zoning has an increase of a hundred fifteen dollars. And that's pretty much fees and services, they have central New Hampshire regional plannings paid out of that and that's based on population. Oops, excuse me, that continues to the other side. Forty one ninety one group, total increase is two hundred and fifteen dollars.
Yep. Okay.
You have to remember that, I'm giving you my notes, I don't have to, but I think it's helpful for you guys to understand how I came up with my numbers. Next group is Government Buildings. I pretty much left the numbers flat. I increased the mowing based on the contract that we have with ASAP. That's where the big increase. That's where the big increase is, in that category. And then I did make, um, janitor adjustment decrease of a thousand. They don't seem to be using the number of hours. I reduced heating maintenance repairs, which is typically a furnace cleaning, uh, down to a thousand, so I'm hoping that will be okay. And that allowed me to adjust the electrical and heating oil to cover the true cost of what we spent or a flat budget one. So primarily, the increase is the mowing for general government buildings, which is an increase of, total increase, ten thousand three eighty-eight. That one line went up, ten thousand.
Bob, here's one place that, when we get, when are we gonna do our final review of this?
Uh, hopefully, Bob, Mike will be here. I'm gonna have the whole packet go to him. I want to be able to do a summary sheet of the warrant articles, the impact, and then get, um, a firm review, you know, a second round with these.
Depending on this impact, lean going back and forth and tallying it up.
Yeah. Cause you were, we're making some changes as we go now, so I'll have to clean those up.
I'm looking at it, Bob, and, uh, we can iron out some of that on the building maintenance line and adjust that. So that it offsets some of these other changes a little bit, you know what I mean?
Yep.
I mean, we have that in there because we knew we had a bunch of work coming up, which we did spend. And I do think there is a lot more work that we need to do around town, but we, we could drop that by fifty thousand and say, hey, all of these.
Right.
Just keep that in the back of our minds later. I'll watch before we're done this.
No, I already thought of, uh, making an adjustment here anyway. Cause quite a few years after we brought it up, we haven't, other than when we had the town hall painted.
Right.
And some of the other buildings, we didn't really touch much of that money until this year.
Right, because I think we couldn't get proper bids for it.
Exactly.
Okay.
So.
And as, as you've already made some change, you'll see a reduction, reduction of four thousand three fifty there, and then, um.
So ten thousand there. That's an increase, I'm sorry.
That's an increase, yeah.
Cemetery.
Okay, so cemetery, the next group is forty-one ninety-five. Their total increase is thirteen thousand six hundred, and they.
Does that reflect his latest budget?
Yeah, yeah. Originally, the second line fence repairing, they had eight thousand in there. You asked them to reduce it and put out a warrant, and then they reconsidered that as well and took it off the warrant, so. That's, uh, total, the increase from twenty twenty-one is thirteen thousand six hundred dollars.
Okay. And insurance, you've got a slight increase there. Twenty-two eighty-four.
Yep. That's based on there.
Police department. So this follows their budget now, or what they just requested?
It does, yep. That's an increase of four thousand eight oh two.
Which we kind of already worked on that, Bob, so.
Fire department's the next account. And John.
He went down?
Yeah. I double-checked his numbers too, and his number went down two dol, two hundred and sixty-four dollars.
Let's get him to head all of our departments.
Building department, what do we got there?
Uh, three percent increase on the payrolls. That's fifteen thirty-one.
Okay, and then.
Emergency management, no change. That's just, um, John keeps that for emergencies, um, if he has to purpose anything that's not, you know, whatever. Highway saw an increase of twenty-five thousand three twenty-three. Um, twenty of it is in the salt. Twenty, eighteen through twenty-twenty, the price per ton on the salt was forty-nine dollars and fifty cents. And this year's, um, salt is seventy-two dollars per ton. So that line alone saw a twenty thousand dollar increase.
Did he show that on his budget?
He did.
I thought it was almost the same, but not that much.
Six over.
He came in and told us one night.
And then there's, uh, the payroll increase for three percent on the full-time, part-time, and overtime.
Yep.
Solid waste. We got an email from Woody tonight. I already done this, so I won't adjust these numbers again. But he said, in here, I reviewed my part-time line and made some cuts. I reduced the line by four thousand six ninety-seven. So he would like to make that line drop down to one hundred and seven fifty-seven. So I will maybe.
How much did he reduce the filing, just so I can read it down?
Four six nine seven. So he wants to make part-time administration one hundred seven fifty-nine. And I will make that adjustment.
Couldn't get it down to ninety-nine.
I mean, you guys can save, rather than, but I'm good.
No, that's all right.
Okay, um. So, uh, total increase before this adjustment was eighteen seven ten.
So I don't have to add this sixteen to it too, do I?
Next page, what, what is it, your page?
I'm doing sixteen plus the eighteen.
Let's see here. No. That's just part-time staff increase. I just wanted to give you that.
So eighteen is the grand.
Eighteen is the grand total, correct.
Minus the forty-six seventy-nine.
Correct. Forty-six, forty-six seven nine.
Okay.
Right. Welfare sees a hundred and twenty-four dollar increase for three percent of CPI. Parks and, Parks and Rec, old holiday memorial there. There's no change flat budget, budget, and they did request that we, they, you leave the budget flat.
You're a hundred and seventy-three dollar increase. Hundred and seventy-three thousand.
Yeah, scary, huh?
Those numbers we just reviewed equal a hundred and seventy-three thousand?
No, they, no, no, no.
Yeah, they did. All your increases all the way through equal a hundred and seventy-three. That's our operating budget.
Proposed a hundred and twelve thousand. Is that what you're looking at, on this page?
I'm looking at right here, variance over or under a hundred and seventy-three thousand from our previous budget.
Oh, that's, that's lapsing funds. That's what we have left from the twenty twenty-one budget. Cause some lines are overspent and some were underspent, so that is what's remaining in the budget. Now I'm gonna add the ninety-nine thousand from disencumbered money. Or a hundred thousand almost. So it's gonna add almost a hundred to that one seventy-three, right? It's actually ninety-nine nine seventy-seven point five zero, if you want to be exact.
Ninety-nine.
Ninety-nine nine seven seven point five zero.
You know that ninety-nine nine seven seven point five zero just about negates your proposed hundred and twelve increase.
Looks a little more palatable.
So that's two seventy-three, four twenty-one fifty. Now, just for the board's information, we do still have.
Hold on, two seventy-three?
Two seventy-three, four twenty-one point five zero. That's after adding back, I'm gonna delete this encumbrance. Um, we do have some small items still outstanding from, for bills, credit cards primarily.
Yep.
And then I think there might be salt or something. I'm not a hundred percent sure, but there might be a couple lingering.
So what's your proposed increase now, Lee?
Well, uh, like you said, if I no, I don't know that yet because I've just reduced it by, I've made some changes here, Dave. I have to.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, I have to.
Go through it all again, yeah.
I know.
Cause it's.
Flat on that one, which was a decrease of forty-three. Woody said he wants to decrease this forty-six, so that's almost nine, ten grand.
Can you do me a favor?
What?
Once you balance them all out, positive and negative and whatever else against that, deduct that amount off of our maintenance budget, the difference to make it completely flat.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so if it's ten or twelve or twenty thousand, whatever it is.
So make my changes and then look at the bottom total, reduce building maintenance, so there's a flat. What about the one piece here, mileage? That's a, that would be twelve twenty-nine, just for that department, not.
Let's, uh, go into that next. Let's, uh, well, let's pull that up, I guess, now if you want to do mileage thing.
It's the worksheet with this, this is returning.
Oh, here, this one here?
Yeah, I gave you a lot of stuff to look at today.
Okay, tell her to go to IRS and get a twenty-one oh six form. You fill that out. And tell her she can actually get an amended form and go for the past three years back if she wants it.
I don't have it.
This one here? You must have it. I put it, I'm very careful. I put it in everybody's packet.
Problem with, problem with mileage for one is, and, and we had this discussion, but if one doesn't want it now, but they're replaced in an elected position, that other person might say, why am I being discriminated against? I go to the bank twice a week or three times a week also. So, I mean, you've got three different entities here.
Yeah.
That have to do that. And I think before anybody takes a step forward, they might want to investigate if they can use a different source to get their funding back in their pocket. Cause that's a responsibility that when they ran for office, they knew they were assuming. Or you need to figure out what it's, what the impact is with all of them involved. So I think that takes, I, I don't think you're gonna do it this time around, you know, so.
One way or another, though, if you decide to go this route, the account should go into a different category similar to.
How are you doing, Mike, comments now?
He, because he uses his own personal vehicle, um, and he's an employee.
Yeah.
He has to, he, he qualifies for mileage, whereas if he was, um.
If he was an elected official.
We either have the A, combined right with the car.
Is this twelve twenty-nine seventy-six the entire year?
This is what she's saying, yeah. And that's only for one department.
And is it, is that in that budget amount, no?
No, no, cause it, that, the account doesn't exist, so I have to put it in a different.
When she showed this to us last time, what did we determine, anything?
No, we said we'd discuss it, we'll think of it.
We're gonna talk about it when we got around to talking about the different budgets.
And that's included in our time when she goes down, so at least our time is paid for. Is there even room under this section? We put another line?
I, well, I can create a line anywhere, but I would recommend putting it in with the supplies, training, education, and mileage if, if I was going to create. Because then you're able to combine others.
Where do you see that one? I don't see it.
It's not, it's not in the budget. It would be in a different section. Only because you wouldn't want to give this dollar amount, and then if she's not spending it all, have that amount. It typically goes with this type of.
Right, so it goes back into revenues.
Yeah.
You know, point of order. We might want to have the other selectmen weigh in on this issue also.
Yeah, while I was gonna make any decision, I was just wondering what we had done previously. I know, I know she had showed during our budget.
But I do know that, you know, she would qualify under the IRS, uh, using Form twenty-one oh six.
Okay, I'll let her know about that.
Tell her to check into it, cause she could do that this year.
And then three years passed, also the amendment?
She did, she could file an amended form for two thousand and twenty, an amended form for two thousand nineteen. And she'd have two thousand twenty-one, which will be going in this year. And I think you go three years. She might be able to go to two thousand eighteen.
She'd be wiser to go that route. Really, she'd be wiser to go that.
Well, if she does a long form, she would be. Some people don't do long.
No.
You don't need the long form.
You don't need the long form.
Nope.
You can file a regular ten forty form, where you don't itemize.
Yeah.
You can still use the twenty-one oh six.
Oh, good.
As a traveling expense.
Exactly.
I know, I do it, but I do long forms.
What she has to do is make sure every month that she marks off the days that she's gone to the bank. So she has an accurate tally to give them at the end of the year. And it's not a, it's not a tax deduction, it's a tax credit. So if you have money coming back, that's additional money. If you owe money on your taxes, you can use that tax credit.
To reduce.
Pay off some of your tax.
Right.
Okay.
So, I mean.
To her benefit to do it that way. It really is.
I understand where she's trying to go, but she could do that without going to the taxpayer's pocket.
She's on the wrong road.
Yeah, you know, go right to the government's pocket and say, hey, hey, I want my money back.
Right, exactly.
Okay. Missed anything?
Okay.
Are you still good for more?
Yeah, let's go on. What are we doing now, revenue?
I've been busy. Uh, okay, revenues. I'm gonna be fairly quick.
Okay. You had enough, Don?
Have you had enough?
I didn't know if you had any questions on my budget size.
I don't think so.
And I ain't missing my revenue.
Thank you, though.
Budget. So I.
Do you want a hand, Don?
Entering some numbers, recommendations for the revenues.
Do you want a hand? Do you want these? Do you want help?
There's only three pages.
Yeah, I'll leave them. No, do you want help? Help, help.
Oh, no, no, I'm good.
The board has recommendations to.
Okay, so let's start at the top then.
All right, so, do you have your revenues, Bob?
Uh, which one is it?
It's the one that, it says revenues, and it's got the lines on the side. It's only three pages and it's paper clipped. Now, that one that's behind there is the actual revenues report that we generate. So I, I'm, I'm use, we're using the worksheet with the lines, but if there's something that you need to refer to, last week, I had mentioned to you where we were with over or under for our collected revenues. But I reminded the board that we had to deduct the eighty thousand dollars extra from rooms and meals. Plus, uh, uh, that, that one was there. There was, uh.
Okay, that's this one.
One fifty-three.
Okay.
Where did I use one fifty-three for? I'm gonna look at that a little closer after.
There's a key page on.
So the one with the lines, um, this is the budget worksheet that we would use to help offset the tax increase to the, um, taxpayers.
Okay, land use here, forty-five thousand?
Yeah, I'm increasing that because I basically budgeted that at six current use penalties at fifty percent. It's probably gonna come in higher, but I feel like this is the year that I can feel comfortable in increasing that line. That's basically six current use penalties. Um, yield tax, I did reduce that slightly. That's, we did not have a big year for yield tax. We have a few outstanding, but I don't anticipate it to be higher than five thousand dollars. Other taxes are just basically interest from the tax collector. Left it the same. Next group is interest on taxes, which is category thirty-one ninety. The whole group account, the system breaks it down. Uh, we just, let's see, how much should we get? We did get cost leads. Ten thousand five hundred, so we were short.
We brought it down.
I brought it down ten to be safe. Licenses, permits and fees, business licenses. I kept it flat from last year. The way Linda's explained it to me in the past is that if she gets an influx of revenues, it's because of new vehicles. But then those, the following year, those new vehicles are now old vehicles, so she does not collect as much revenue. And she, so I feel that's very, um, conservative to keep it at the same flat budget.
Jumping it up, yeah.
Yeah, are you okay with that? Okay. Oh, I just missed something. Uh, building permits. I think I missed a number there. We need to put a plug.
Yeah, went to twenty-three thousand or so.
Yeah, we need to put a plug in there for twenty, cause if you look at the details, I usually have budgeted. Yeah, we need to put a plug in there for 20, cause if you look at the details, I usually have budgeted...
We won't be able to tell till you get to the end of it, so. So we wanna add 20,000 in there again?
That's correct, cause last year we had budgeted 20, and I think that is a, a comfortable number.
Yeah, it may go up with the new house, but we won't know that, so.
Right, so, I'll increase that, which is good, cause I was kinda disappointed on the bottom line. Other licenses, again, the system breaks out the 3209 categories, we plug in one number, 10,000, and left it flat. Last year we collected 13,287. Any questions there?
No.
Uh, page three is the category revenues from other government, and, um, we had a, a lot of, um, we had a little bit of a windfall with the rooms and meals this year, but DRA did forewarn me that that would probably only be a one-time increase, so I left it at the flat 135, I left the highway block grant at the flat 90,000 from, from prior year. So basically, um, the added change is 1,010 for the grant that you guys approved last week. So there's just a very slight increase there, everything else is flat. Does that work for you guys?
Uh huh.
Uh, charges for service is category 3401. We typically have income from departments and then income from recycling, and the, the group is typically 50, and we've been going with 50 for the last number of years, it kind of, um, fluctuates. Sometimes we have good years for recycling, this year was a good year for recycling.
Okay.
Uh, so that, we left at $50,000. The board okay with that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Uh, sale of town property, that, we don't typically budget anything, and, uh, from time to time, the sale of cornerstone, for example, is a pass-through, town vehicles that comes and goes, depending on what we sell. So there's nothing there, interest on deposits, I typically leave it at a flat $1,000.
And underwear checking accounts can collect interest on, huh?
Um, it's, that information, that number is included under...
I know it's not much, but it should be more than $1,400, you would think.
No, there's another one here, no, actually, that's it. The, on a monthly basis, she'll only make like $23, and then she's been investing it with points from...
I'll put the money for that out.
So this, uh, $1,096 is gonna go up 20,000, cause I missed a number.
Well, it wasn't there yet.
Okay, what else do you have? So that's gonna be 1116010, 1,116. What did I use for, um... I'm getting tired here, I apologize. Where did I write this 153 used tax rate setting? And then we had 80,000.
You used two lines, you used room and board's meal, and you used the highway grant.
Yeah, no.
Those numbers don't match up, though.
Oh, um, this is, this is the revenues that we set our tax rate with, it's an R, which is revised, and we had an extra 80,000, which we cannot include, which is the rooms and meals, and then we had 10,000. So that number's not right, 153 is not right.
No, it wasn't what we talked about.
No, I know, and I don't, I'm not sure exactly why I wrote that, but I'm certain that it's just 80,000 that we used on our revenue, so we will have...
No, you did do two lines.
I did do two lines?
Yeah, one was a highway block grant, and one was, how about the flood control?
It was a decrease of 1,024, uh, 224.
You did use two lines when you did that.
I did.
You said we had to use both of those lines towards our tax rate reduction.
All right, maybe I could let Steve on another one.
Well, look at it next week, cause I know you did do two lines, wasn't just one. What were the two funds? We were just looking at them, what, the funds are back here, they're labeled. Right here.
Revenues. 135. Well, see, the highway block grant came in 10,000 higher.
Okay, so there's...
But, but I don't, oh, okay, yes.
You used highway block grant.
Okay, so it was only 10, not 153, so it's 80 and 10.
Where do you see the 10? 10 is more.
No, what I'm getting at is, we had budgeted 90, she adjusted our numbers up, $10,680. You see here, this is what I used to, this is what the DRA changed, those three numbers. One was a decrease of 1,024, one was an increase, and one was an increase of 80,000. So these are the final numbers that we use to set the tax rate.
What was the other increase one, the second one down there?
10,868, but there's a decrease of 1,044, about nine. So, 90,000 is what?
So you didn't use flood control and highway block?
Yeah, I have to, so, so this actual column?
No, you used, what you used, you used to reduce our tax, you used highway block and rooms and meals. That's what you did.
Okay, so it's a combined total of 90,000, and, let's see, 80,259, plus 10,680. So those, these numbers are in this actual, so I have to subtract that. Minus 10,680, and then plus 144.
We'll double check that, cause you already did do us that.
Yeah, so we actually only end up with a, um, just over 8,000, 80,695, cause I have to reduce this, uh, flood control by 1224. So rather than 3, uh, 1,331, 317, minus 10,680, minus 80,259, and then, plus 1224. Our actual revenue is 1,241,602, and I'll double check that, but it's not the 1,097.
What did you say it was?
1,241,602. Minus 1077, so that's an excess of 144,077, which sounds great. Double check that. Excess revenues.
And...
Okay.
So excess revenues, when we were doing it, were they were between 350 and 360,000?
Correct, but that was with... The rooms and meals and the other amount, which is not correct.
No, last week when we got done, the revenues that we had a chance to apply to taxes, rounded out half of those deductions to 350 to 360,000 dollars. And we rounded it to 350, cause you were gonna spend some money still.
No, you were including...
No, it wasn't, you deducted those amounts.
No, 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 you were including the expenses, the operating budget, you took the number that's left here, plus this revenue.
What are you talking about?
There's lapsing funds from the operating budget.
Yeah, that's what I was talking about, that amount was 350 to 360, but you still had some bills coming in.
Correct.
So we estimated it was about 350,000 dollars.
Correct. So as of today, if I add that 99,977, we have 273,421 in operating budget.
How did it get down so low?
Well, I told you there were bills that are outstanding, 50,000.
You thought there was about 10?
No, I told you it was gonna be close, it ranged between 32 and 48. This last Nantucket retirement bill I just paid, paid, uh, yesterday, put my retirement budget in excess of 16,639, overdrawn, so there was...
Remember writing down 350,000 as a rough estimate, cause it was up to 360, but you had some bills coming in still.
Right, Dave, but if you take this 173 that's here, plus the 153, which is now 144, you're looking at 317,614. Now I'm gonna add 99,977, it's gonna be basically another $100,000. We're looking at 417,614. That's not including the surplus we used, the revenues we used to set the tax rate. But I'll have all those numbers crunched.
Okay, and what else do we have for revenues to offset the tax rate?
Surplus, but because, uh...
What surpluses aren't you showing?
Nothing, everything's in.
How about the extra money from the...
Rainy day fund?
Kimball Pond. Our insurance gave us 100 grand, we spent out.
Okay, you wanna check into that?
So it should be 80 or 90,000 dollars left there.
Okay, so that was not part of our, um, okay, so I will check with the auditor, cause he's working on the financial 535, he would probably have that, so check on surplus.
And then, I'm gonna go back and run off.
From Kimball Pond claim.
Yeah. And then I'm gonna go on memory only again, but there was at least $45,000 left over in the COVID grant.
COVID money, okay.
And there's two different COVID grants, if you look at that back. There's another 145,000 or so there. Well, Kimball Pond wasn't quite 100, cause we had to do the demo work.
Right, I think that was below...
80,000, yeah, somewhere around there. Then we paid one more bill out of that, remember that late bill?
Yeah, but...
It was a good 70, so 78, 79.
Yeah, I remember I had that asbestos bill, I thought we had paid and we didn't.
Yeah. All right, I'll check on those, so...
Anything else I'm forgetting, Lee, for revenues?
And both of those came in 20, the beginning of 2021, so they would not have been reported in our, and the auditor's working on 2020 right now. I don't think we have anything else.
But they should have been on our revenue page, right?
We have, um, the ARPA grant, that's gonna make my head spin, but there was a, a law that passed that I will forward to you guys, that talks about the ARPA grant and, uh, added flexibility for expending, but not very clear, it is very, very lengthy.
Oh, one last thing, you got 150,000, 149 and change.
That's ARPA, you can't touch that.
Yeah, we can, we can do 4.7% of our budget when you do the calculation. And so we got that 150, this year, in June, we're getting another 150. So you had the calculation, it was 4.7% of our total budget, and so you could use 143,000 of the 150,000 we received.
For potential loss of revenue.
Yeah. Good thing I got the memory.
Yeah. Um, I will check with the auditor on that as well. Cause I also have to report that.
Yeah.
To federal government.
So...
Okay, so there's three sources there.
If you add that money, 140 with the other 140, there's 2E, plus our 417. It's 417 and 2E.
697.
Yeah, 697, 614.
417, and what was that, 2E, I saw...
2E is 417, 614, so it's total of 697, 614.
Just rounding off, so.
Okay. Now you're working with numbers that I have here, but if you're gonna have me reduce the operating budget to be flat, uh, yeah, I guess...
Yeah, but you can go through all the pluses and minuses there, so.
Yeah, okay.
It'll all be jumbled around, Lee, but I just wanted to let you know, those are the numbers that I can run off of, from my head.
All right, I'll look into those.
So...
All right.
Anything else on revenues, Bob? Okay. This is just our first kind of run under anyway.
Oh, yeah.
Number raised, that goes here, number of grades. Okay. Review time clock policy. The reason this is up here is because, um, I think we've looked in with the Department of Labor and we've gotta pay somebody for time before they punch in if they're unlocking the gate and locking the gate after they punch out.
Yeah, so they did clarify for us that, um, if it's part of their responsibility to lock up and open...
The gate, that they are covered with workman's comp.
That is should, well, that is a definite, they're covered under our workman's comp, even if they're on the clock or off the clock, that doesn't matter. But the question that he had also was, should he be paid for...
The time.
The time from the gate, unlocking it, getting to the building, and then doing the repeat at the end of the shift. So you guys decided you might wanna review the policy on, um, time clocks? And I think I gave you all a copy.
Yeah, well, my thought was, Bob, is that we have everybody punch in and out with the clock on all of their times, and then whoever does the gate, whether it's the assistant manager or the manager, we pay them for a certain amount of time above and beyond to open and lock the gate for that day. So... I would say, um, if you're opening the gate and closing the gate, 15 minutes should cover both ends of it, seven and a half minutes each way.
Yeah, good, it's kinda easy to say that, but we really need to have a determination, you know? They don't, you know...
You wanna ask the, uh, operations manager if he thinks that's a...
Yeah, find out if that's a fair enough way to do it.
Yeah.
Cause this way here, you're locking, you punch a clock, you're locking, you know you're gonna get paid for the time you opened up in the morning, the time you're leaving.
And then we'll have air at the time.
So that's all we have to worry about, you know?
Right, right.
I mean, it should be a standard time, but you know, somebody might say, well, the phone rang, I had to answer it.
But, but the, the, the real crux of it is, you can have a supervisor come in to open this shift, but leave early for the day, and then have an assistant close.
Yeah.
So there's gotta be a set...
Right.
Time for...
One way of it.
Um, would it be acting supervisor or acting, I had it written down somewhere?
Well, I don't think we need to dwell on it tonight, if we wanna ask them what a reasonable amount of time is, cause whether it's 10 minutes or five minutes, or whatever they think is reasonable, we'll go with it.
So for, for now, until we amend the policy, cause I think it needs to be put in writing?
Yeah.
Ask them to use a time clock for in and out?
Yeah, and then we'll add...
Add a reasonable time?
Yeah.
At the end of that shift?
Well, my thought is, whoever does the gate, whether it's the transfer station manager or the assistant manager, or even a worker for that amount, if they use the clock to punch in and punch out, and keep theirs, you know, do their lunches and do everything like their standard, they should put a G if they open the gate, and another G if they close the day, two Gs is both, both ends of the day, and one G is, uh, you know, for the gate is one end of the gate, so, like, say, Woody could open the gate, he'd have a G on that same day, and he could have a G for closing the gate.
No, it's whatever, but it's a good idea to know from, at least get a consensus from the person, what's the adequate amount of time it takes if you get there.
So maybe, um, see if you can come in next Thursday and we'll talk about that, or he can give us a time.
Okay.
And then we'd like to add that to the time clock. And then we'd like to add that to the time clocks when Eric does it.
Just so we can resolve that issue, you know?
And just let him know, we'll have Eric add it to the time cards every day, but to use the, uh.
The G code or something? G in initial.
Or open, close, O and C.
Oh, okay.
Whatever would work too. You know?
Yeah.
I like that better, open.
O and C, so that way you know who opened and who closed. And, um, and then if we get a time, what I'd like to do is have one more billet point here and we'll reflect that on this. And we'll okay it once Mike is out of media.
Okay, so in the meantime, can give Woody direction to use a time clock to go in and out and then add a reasonable time to each one of those days that he's opening and closing, and then we'll revisit the policy to put it in writing.
Yep, and let him know we want Eric to, Eric's gonna add the time
Okay.
at the end of the week.
Okay.
Okay, I'll take care of that, I think.
Yeah, for, for instance, it'll probably come up on a weekend, cause is it this Saturday? Eddie won't be working?
Correct.
So that means Eddie will be opening up and Eddie will be closing up.
Okay, gotcha. Alright.
That way we've at least acted on it and that's gonna get.
Yeah, and then it's still a work in progress.
Yep.
Alright.
Okay.
Mother asked me to bring this next item up before the board, she said we don't have to act on it, but it's something for the board to consider. She said, uh, she just went through a webinar, there are many towns, town clerks that are, are implementing this, uh, fee. And it's an extra tax that's tacked on to registration, helps offset, um.
Bond payment?
Well, that's what she's proposing in this case, we have a bond pending, and she said it could be something that we adopt as a, as an RSA, cause it's gotta be adopted, um, and then have it, um, dissolved at the end of the bond payment, so it's just something for us to, for the board to consider.
I'm afraid it'll never get dissolved, to be honest with you, and I know that from people paying online, it seems like a small amount. But people have complained about paying those extra few dollars per registration if they got a lot of them. I think you heard the same thing earlier in the year, so I know that, uh.
She crunched some numbers, she, she gave slightly a big favor, she worked, used a forty-five hundred registrations as a, a ballpark, but she just said that she did crunch her numbers for two thousand and twenty-one, and it was sixteen, forty-six hundred vehicles that could potentially, um.
Two dollars, you're talking nine grand, I think that.
Coming out of the same pocket, so.
Taken out of the same pocket, whether it's taxation or.
It's, it's bad enough that the, they keep, well, you know, you got the dogs that they're going after.
Feel like we're nickeling diamond people on it.
Yeah. Just, to me, it doesn't feel right.
That's the way, that's the way life is going now, though. Buy your fishing license, you pay extra, cause you linked it.
We don't go this route anymore, we're not gonna make a motion to it, just a consensus.
Yeah, you know, and I'm sure if the other selectmen is here, he might, he might chime in and agree, you know, I mean, it's got, coming up from the same people. You know, there are towns that, that charge you for the trash bags that you're using. And you may pay less in your tax bill for the trash going, but you're paying just as much getting it from your house to there, because you gotta buy the purple bags, you know?
Yeah.
I think that, uh, I think we'll hold off for next week to make the final decision.
Okay.
Consensus so far is that we're probably not gonna do it. And we'll hold off for the final thing and talk.
Till Mike's here, yeah.
Okay.
To hold the word.
Yeah, I think that makes good, uh, good sense. Okay, that's it from our general town business, I'm gonna head to the mailbox. Lea needs to send out a memo to all departments. This includes me again. Um, it's another year, we got our annual report due. She'd like, um, everything in no later than January twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-one. So that she can get it together.
Did I say twenty-one? I meant twenty twenty-two.
Twenty twenty-two, yes, good catch, I didn't even catch it saying it. And, um.
Nobody complained about it.
She's got the font size and the letterhead size and margins, and that all seems to be working real well, so we just wanted to make that quick notice. And we got one other item in here. Auto-select one. Cause it's just like a cookie bar here.
It's white powder, isn't it?
If it's a gift, you get the card. Okay, here's a thank you. Mike Dean Bob, thank you for the gift card games for Christmas, such help for me celebrated. Thank you, happy new year, love whole baker. Oh, doesn't say love, just whole baker. I had lived that way, man.
It's alright, you're on camera.
Wait till she sees that. Well, thank you, I have heard from several people as I was walking through the departments, I think it was appreciated, we did that for Thanksgiving and Christmas, I think goes a long way. Okay, bringing it back to, um, public comment, Leo?
Yeah, um, so what was the date that the?
Okay, Leo doesn't have anything.
What did, what was the date that the board chose to, uh, stop the light pollution out there?
Um, it was January thirtieth, I believe.
No, fifteenth, I think.
Fifteenth, okay.
I'm just checking it out.
Okay. So it's six today?
Yeah.
Got a few more days, Leo.
Yeah, they're doing light pollution.
And I noticed that light snow got rid of our trip hazard for a few weeks, so that was good, but it's melting down. Anything else, Leo?
No, that's it, thanks.
Uh, Lea, anything else?
No.
Bob?
Uh, no, I already voiced my complaint with, uh, the person approaching that department.
Okay.
So.
Alright, um, the only thing I have is I think that the, uh, possible snow might delay the walk-through until next Tuesday.
Okay.
Um, did we let Mary know at all?
Not yet.
Okay, I'll call you first thing in the morning, let you know if it got delayed.
Okay, sounds good. Um, I did get it posted on the website and, and it's a minute.
Okay.
That didn't get to me till early this morning, but I did get it out there.
Okay, good. You know, everything was late getting out to the contractors?
Your phone number is on that, so they'll be calling you.
So anyway, um, the information was a little later than I wanted, their final plans got through, I got the first copy yesterday and that was driven out to us in the ice storm. The other guys could get theirs electronically, but most of them got them today. A walkthrough schedule for tomorrow, so I think it may get continued to Tuesday. It was sent out to four, four or five contractors so far, plus it's on our website in Shuunisville. So hopefully, um, I added two more contractors with the architect this afternoon, cause a couple of them couldn't fit it into their schedules. And whether it's to bid it or to do the job, one of the two, so a lot of times these guys are booked up for longer than a, a year's period of time and it's as quick as we could get the final print done, so if nothing else, whether it's the January twenty-seventh or the first week in February, we'll have the number on it to look at and see what we're gonna do. See which direction we'll go, whether it's on a warrant this year.
Cause that's the only one we're missing from that warrant list, is the.
Do you need help from the architect writing the proposed warrant, or are you gonna do that?
Uh, well, um, I'll probably reach out to him if I'm hurt.
Yep.
They're hard to get ahold of, but.
They are, we've been crunching to get this thing wrapped up, I think, cause I've had trouble as well, but.
I'll also look at the schools, um. But we had a warrant in two thousand fifteen for that, so it should be pretty close to that.
If there's dimensions on there, these dimensions are, um, like fourteen six by thirty-four. Proposed two-story addition for the, well, send me what they had and we'll, I think we can refine it well enough.
Yep, I think so too.
Basically a Lulu and a, uh, a steer access. Okay. So I guess once we get the number, Bob, we can try and make decisions on
Right.
whether we go forward, whether we try and fund it over two years, whether we try and fund most and put a warrant article for a certain dollar amount. But sooner or later, it's gonna come in front of the voters, so whether it goes or doesn't go, you know? It's gonna be a tight year to get it in this year, but I think, I don't know when we get it done.
I think it depends on, you know, where, where we can move money some in the budget.
Yep. Yep. You know, there are a lot of good things going on with our budget this year, so on our end, it would be a good year to do it, but it doesn't always fit in, depending on where the construction budget comes in, so we're gonna jump that over the next few weeks and see where it comes. I thought there was a little bit of excess in the preliminary budget that we had, but COVID quickly is eating that out now.
Well, you know, in a, in a normal year.
Right.
You, you wouldn't have the price of lumber that lumber is right now, so.
Yeah, and we find it's not just lumber, it's windows, it's copper, it's plumbing, it's wiring.
If you can get it.
Yeah.
If you can get it, cause one day you go into one of these big box stores looking for something and the next time you go, they don't have anything, they all.
Yeah, so, um, the supply chain does not look like it's getting any better for quite some time, so.
Really?
I mean, we're looking at, oh, no, half a year now, and it's not gonna be even close to being adjusted, so. So, that being said, I don't have anything further. Um, motion to adjourn at nine twenty-six?
Second.